You're watching KPTS Channel 8.
Production and broadcast costs for Sedgwick County Commission meetings have been underwritten by Sedgwick County. KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the county commission hearings. Viewers are invited to write to County Commission Broadcast, KPTS 320 West 21st Street, Wichita, Kansas 67203.
I'm Kristi Zuccovich. Welcome to the December 2nd Sedgwick County Commission meeting. We are glad you're joining us today. Of course, we use this time to let you know about some things going on around Sedgwick County. And commissioners, you know, we had a little bad weather last weekend with all the ice and cold and kind of rainy and slick. And so the bulky coupons that, remember, folks could register for the bulky coupons, they were to expire today. But we have extended that to next Wednesday, December 9th. We have let folks know that that has been extended to December 9th so they can still use the coupons. And you know, the weather's looking up this weekend through the later part of the week, maybe back up in the 50s. A little bit easier maybe to load those things in your car and take it out. So if you had a bulky waste coupon, it does not expire today. It will be honored through December 9th. We hope that that is a service to you. If you have any questions, you can contact Environmental Resources at 660-7200. Also commissioners, remind you coming up December 12th at the zoo, it's Seasons Treatings that will be at 10:00 a.m. It's an opportunity where they throw out some gifts and entertainment and enrichment for the animals. So always a great opportunities to see how the animals at the zoo celebrate the holidays. And commissioners, we are in Garth Week. Garth Week has begun down at the Interst Bank Arena. I guess the trucks started rolling in yesterday to set up and they've got lots of plans and flurry as he will give those concerts December 3rd through the 6th. So I'm sure we're gonna have a lot of folks coming into our community and that's always a good thing. Remind you, I don't know why we need a reminder of this, but December 12th is Shocker Game down at Interst Bank Arena. And the 19th, we have K-State down at the arena. And then of course, our Christmas program, Trans-Siberian Orchestra on December 22nd. So lots of things going on there. And commissioners, look around the chambers and how festive we are. And yesterday, we had some elves come in here and we'd like to give a big shout out to Ula West. You know, she's down at our front desk. She comes up and helps make sure everything looks great. And Lisa and Carol in your office who come in and help make our floor look great. And Lila Albright, who is our retired security manager. So she's been retired a couple of years and she loves to come in here and make this look great for you all and for me. And so we give a great big shout out to them. We'll have these up through the first part of January and then we'll take it all down and start it up again next year. But a great big shout out to them. We do have on today's agenda, it's not a long agenda as far as number of items, but really important items. We do have the 2016 Legislative Platform. We have an agreement with KPTS to provide broadcast of this meeting in 2016. We have an amendment to the CIP for a tag office and I know that's exciting for a great number of people. But commissioners, I do want to end on one little note here. Have a little something for you, no quiz. It is the holiday season and you know, most people, we all look forward to spending time with family. Some of us spend time putting up the outside Christmas lights and decorations or some of you. We have family traditions. We like all the holiday treats and sweets and our kids look forward to Santa. But you know, there's one guy, one guy who this time of year brings an entirely different excitement our way. And that is this guy right here. We have the 2015 Roadshow. It is next Wednesday, 9:00 a.m. County Commission Meeting. Be here, be watching it, or be a Jayhawk, I think is what that picture says. So make sure that you know and make sure that you have that on your calendar. While most of us are looking for holidays, David Spears is looking for the road show. So there you go.
Kristi?
Uh huh.
You want to double check that date?
Oh, is it the...
It's next week.
Next week?
It's December 9th.
Oh, I got the days all wrong. I got so excited. The 9th!
It's so exciting. Maybe Dave will have to do a second show, kind of like Garth.
Hey, look what you've done. Okay, December 9th. We'll make sure and we will promote that and we'll be putting Dave's picture out on social media as well to make sure people know December 9th for the road show. So don't miss it. Make sure that you're there. Commissioners, important work this morning. Happy holidays to all of you. And Chairman Ransah, let's get one of your few meetings that you have left underway.
Four to go. Thank you, Kristi. And I do want to say thanks to Lisa, Carol, Ula, and Lila, as Kristi did, for the fine decorations. They've done this every year and we appreciate it greatly. With that, we'll call over to regular meeting the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners for December 2nd, 2015. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invitation to be led by Pastor Daniel Serbel, First Salem Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Will you bow your heads as I pray? Dear wise and loving Father, first, let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health when you need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you've said the citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established these very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray this assembled board, I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around Sedgwick County. In your most blessed name, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor for being here today.
You're welcome.
Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Unruh.
Present.
Commissioner Norton.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Peter John.
Present.
Chairman Ransah.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
If Andrew Crane is hearing you, go to the podium. Please give us your name and address for the record.
My name's Andrew Crane. I live at 517 East Douglas Avenue in Wichita, Kansas, apartment number 320. I am here to talk to you about the Wichita Transit. I know that the city council passed yesterday the transits, the new routes and everything. I am a big part of that and I just wanted to let you guys know that. And also, you guys need to come together and rock Wichita and rock Sedgwick County. And we need a good bus system in town for the blind and the disabled in this town. And we all need to come together and make this happen for Wichita. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. You've given us some materials here. We appreciate it. I think we have, Commissioner has a question for you. Commissioner Peter John?
Yes. Thank you for coming down today. I was interested, you and, appreciate the fact that you gave us some material to read and look at. A lot of the material talked about guide dogs. Could you talk a little bit about guide dogs? And I don't know in terms of the number, percentage of the folks who are, have visual impairments who are relying on guide dogs here in Sedgwick County or the city of Wichita. If you have any information on that, I'd be interested.
Yes. I run a nonprofit organization called Guiding Paws and it's to educate people about blind people with guide dogs and what blind people can do. And I am a blind individual that has a guide dog and I would like to travel and have excellent transportation. And that is including the Wichita Transit and including getting Amtrak to come in and including a lot of other transportation. And the, I do different presentations across Kansas and Wichita here and telling people about what blind people can do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion we receive and file.
Second. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransah.
Aye. Thank you again, Andrew, for being here today.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Appointments. Item B, approve the resignation of Charlie Stevens from the Sedgwick County Public Building Commission.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Yost, County Counselor, item B is simply our acceptance of Mr. Stevens' resignation from the Public Building Commission. He has commissioned Peter John's appointment and he desires to step down and it looks like the paperwork's in order. I would urge acceptance of his resignation.
Thank you. Commissioner Peter John?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make that motion that we accept Mr. Stevens' resignation. But before we do that, I'd like to make a brief comment thanking Mr. Stevens for his service. He was my initial appointment to the Public Building Commission and served there for a number of years and is volunteer appointee on that board and we all have an appointment on it. I very much appreciate Mr. Stevens' work as well as the other folks who are serving Sedgwick County in that position. So I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransah.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item C, approve the resignation of Dustin Noe from the Sedgwick County Rockford Township as the township trustee.
Commissioners, Eric Yost, County Counselor, item C is the resignation of Mr. Noe from his position as Rockford Township trustee. He is Commissioner Howell's appointment and I urge acceptance of the resignation at this time.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to commend Dustin Noe for his service. He has served with honor. He's a very, very busy young man that is going to school and has a very aggressive work schedule and unfortunately, just a little bit of conflict there. So he needs to pay attention to other parts of his life that are more important than this right now. So I would be making a motion here to accept or approve the resignation of Dustin Noe. But in saying that also, I am looking for someone else to serve. So if anybody's listening to this would like to serve in Rockford as a township trustee, please give me a call. It is a very difficult job. They have got a lot of responsibility. They have a lot of roads to maintain and other issues that come before them. So it is a tough job and not a lot of folks actually out there that are in that township. So I'm looking for folks. Just like to put that plug out there. And Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the resignation of Dustin Noe.
Second. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransah.
Aye. Next item, please.
New business. Item D, Sedgwick County 2016 Legislative Platform.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kristi Zuccovich and with Communications. I'm here this morning with our draft 2016 Legislative Platform for your review and comment and proposal. We, as you know, the process is we begin in August and we consider the previous legislative session. We talk with departments about the initiatives and the issues that will be important to them as we move into the next legislative session. We have several conversations with you at staff meeting to have those discussions and conversations about what type of items that we want to include. And this year, the proposal before you includes your recommendations that we split the platform a little bit differently than we have in the past. We do have a section that is key legislative initiatives, which we have identified as five specific issues that either were carryover from the previous session that we want to continue working on or things that have specific issues that we want to address in this session. And for, just for the record, I will call the titles of those. And again, all of this information is available in our backup. But it is reducing the cost and regulatory burden of public works projects, Kansas threatened an endangered species list, unilateral annexation, appearance bond revocation process, and juvenile detention centers. We do have another section, which is our position statements, which provides kind of a philosophy, if you will, for legislators to understand what we believe about specific topics. And those topics include transportation, the register of deeds, public safety issues, general government issues, taxes, and health and human services. And it provides a guide for us if there are specific legislative initiatives that are brought up during the session. We know where the commission as a whole has had consensus. This draft before you, again, we've had several reviews, we've had several versions. What we know about today is whatever you approve today could change tomorrow. We do consider this to be an ongoing document. It is a living, changing document. We will be prepared to address any issues that come up during the session. We'll bring those back to you for review. But this is a place for us to agree to today and then to move forward for the session. As you know, we do have our legislative liaisons, Scott Schneider and Jason Watkins and Scott is here today as well. But they will be our eyes and ears and feet on the ground in Topeka to have the conversations with our delegation and others. And they will be communicating with us as to specific issues that might be appropriate for us to be engaged in. We also have staff in the county counselor's office who have been very instrumental in helping us in the past and that has been Bob Parnacott. And now we'll transition to John Von Ochen. So we are, again, very appreciative of the county counselor's staff in assisting us with the legislative issues. But I bring this to you today for your approval and continued conversation over the next several months. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Kristi. Commissioners, are there any questions? What's the will of the board? Commissioner Norton?
Before we have a motion, I'm sure somebody will make it. I just want to go on the record that I will support this today, but there is some language in a few of the items that I don't agree with. But as we move forward and try to present a legislative platform as a majority of the commission, we need to bring something forward for Scott and to move forward at the Topeka level. So I'm also believe that this year, the state legislature has many, many huge issues that they're going to need to deal with and many of the things that we're concerned with in our policy and position statements may never see the light of the day. So I will be supportive to try to maintain progress in moving this forward. But there is some language in some of the items that I really don't agree with and I voiced that as we've gone through the process. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to, I guess, comment as a former legislator, the value of this document. I would say that the legislators are not going to read this. We know that. I think we have a new strategy this year. We're going to give them a small card that has our priorities on it, which I think is more effective. We can give it to them repeatedly throughout the session and remind them of our priorities. And I think it's a really smart strategy. But with respect to the details of this legislative platform, it's really more for our lobbyists. I think when things come up, they have the chance to know what our position is on those issues as they come up during the session. Sometimes things come up really rapidly and they don't have time to call back and get an opinion of the county commission. So this is more of a guideline, more for our lobbyists than anybody. I know that we may deliver a copy of this to legislators and I know from experience that they just absolutely inundated with too much information to read. They'll never get through this and they'll be grateful to get it, but they're not going to read it and that's okay. That's not the point of this. And so this is really a statement of our positions on a lot of issues so that our lobbyists can be most effective when these issues come up in Topeka.
Right.
I want to make sure that we have that understanding as we do this today. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Unruh?
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have some concerns and objections to some of the language and some of the positions that are included. I'll look forward to the document that we will provide as a, our issue statements as we, the smaller document that was referenced here and see how that's worded. But at this point, I have enough objection that I will not be supporting our legislative platform.
Any other comments from Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we've reached a point. I'll make a motion that we adopt this platform and obviously, it's a work by this group body so there's, we can pick out certain items that some of us may feel more strongly about and others. And I appreciate the comments from my colleagues on the bench regardless of where they come down in terms of voting on this. But I think this is a useful document and I would add that even if the legislators don't read it, our lobbyists, there's a lot of things that pop up in Topeka, especially around 3:00 a.m. at the end of the session. And I think that having a roadmap for our folks who are advocating and obviously, for some of the items, we've got names attached and there's some commissioner names here on it. There's department heads who have some names who are on it. And so obviously, they're going to be very close and know more details on this. But it becomes a communication tool between the lobbyists and the county and also as a way of, you know, gee, what do you guys down in Sedgwick County think about this issue that's popped up at 3:00 a.m.? And so even though we don't expect that every legislator will read every word of it, we've got a good overview and I think it's an important document for advocacy in terms of where Sedgwick County is coming from for the 2016 legislative session. So I will be supporting it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I want to provide opportunity for the public to comment on this. If there's anyone from the public who'd like to comment on this item. Seeing none. Kristi, thank you very much for all of your work on this. I do think this is a step forward to help focus our efforts and try to be effective in the legislature. Do we have a motion yet?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
And a second?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
No.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransah.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item E, contract with Sedgwick County and Kansas Public Telecommunication Services Incorporated for 2016.
Commissioners, Kristi Zuccovich for the Communications for the record. I bring to you this morning our annual contract for KPTS. This provides for the opportunity for us to have live broadcast of our weekly county commission meeting on KPTS. This has been a very longstanding relationship with our public television partners. They are very flexible and accommodating to us in our schedule on those occasions when we do have a longer than normal meeting and they are willing to allow us to continue to have live broadcast so the public can see your action, the work of government, the important work that, of how their tax dollars are spent. And so I think this is a continued opportunity for us and to share and to be transparent. This is an opportunity for you to share the good work of all of the employees of Sedgwick County in serving this community. There are no changes to the contract from what we've had in the past. This, again, only provides for the Wednesday morning opportunity for live coverage. There's been discussion, Commissioner Howell, you have discussed the possibility of us adding other meetings or replacing meetings and we are happy to continue to explore those options in 2016. It'll give us some opportunities to film and we can figure out where the best venue and how we'll use that. But I think this provides that consistency as well for the community to know, at least for the most part, Wednesday mornings are where you can find channel, you can find the Sedgwick County Commission meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions. We do have our folks here who are from Channel 8. Phil Richardson is here. He's our contact and has long been from KPTS. But if you have any other questions, otherwise, I'd recommend you approve.
Thank you, Kristi. Before I forget, I'll ask if anyone from the public would like to speak on this issue. Seeing none. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you. I do have a few questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see in the contract, we pay what, is it $480 per hour of broadcast?
We do have an hourly rate, yes, of $480. There is a split of the broadcast time and then the closed captioning. The closed captioning is separate because that is provided through a separate entity through KPTS. But yes, it is the two hours is what our weekly minimum. If it goes beyond that time, then we pay a quarterly rate.
I am reading the details. It looks like $75 per hour for closed captioning and we have a two-hour minimum. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do we know how much money we budget for this each year? I should have looked that up. I apologize for not looking it up. I could help myself, but...
You know, and I did not look it up this year. I usually have the, here's what it's been the last few years. It is somewhere around $50,000 a year that we spend. And it really does vary depending on the agendas that we have and the length of time that the meetings run. When we have a number of agenda items that have more public hearings or have extended public hearings, then the meetings will run longer and therefore, we will spend more. But it has ranged anywhere from about $50,000. We've had a high year, a couple of years ago was over $76,000.
So... Well, I would like to just make a couple of other comments. One of my frustrations with this is the schedule doesn't actually show the commission meeting. And so someone who looks at their schedule may not realize that this meeting is actually going to happen. They see children's programming, which is fine, but you've got to be, you've got to be wanting to go and look at the channel and find out that the actual meeting's happening. And so to me, that's not ideal. And I know that something may be beyond the control of the people that are dealing with this contract, but it's still just a, something I would like to see it fixed somehow. And so that's a, that's an issue I'd like to just raise for discussion. Also, can you tell me, we also have a rebroadcast that happens on Channel 7, the local government channel, at least the city of Wichita. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Sure. We do have rebroadcasts with the city of Wichita. As you know, the reason the Channel 8, the reason why we're on Channel 8 is because for most people in the county, and that's countywide, it is a public access. It's not something they need to get through cable. It is something they could get over the air if they wanted. There are in each cities, some of the cities have a Channel 7. We've found that... You know, and I did not look it up this year. I usually have the, here's what it's been the last few years. It is somewhere around $50,000 a year that we spend, and it really does vary depending on the agendas that we have and the length of time that the meetings run. When we have a number of agenda items that have more public hearings or have extended public hearings, then the meetings will run longer, and therefore, we will spend more. But it has ranged anywhere from about $50,000. We've had a high year, a couple of years ago was over $76,000, so...
Well, I would like to just make a couple of other comments. One of my frustrations with this is the schedule doesn't actually show the commission meeting, and so someone who looks at their schedule may not realize that this meeting is actually going to happen. They see children's programming, which is fine, but you've got to be wanting to go and look at the channel and find out that the actual meeting is happening. And so to me, that's not ideal. And I know that something may be beyond the control of the people that are dealing with this contract, but it's still just a, something I would like to see it fixed somehow. And so that's a issue I'd like to just raise for discussion. Also, can you tell me, we also have a rebroadcast that happens on Channel Seven, the local government channel, at least the city of Wichita. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Sure. We do have rebroadcasts with the city of Wichita. As you know, the reason the Channel Eight, the reason why we're on Channel Eight is because for most people in the county, and that's countywide, it is a public access. It's not something they need to get through cable. It is something they could get over the air if they wanted. There are in each cities, some of the cities have a Channel Seven. We've found that there are four that have a broadcast Channel Seven. It is Wichita, Derby, Bel Air, and Park City. And so we do rebroadcast on Wichita Channel Seven on Wednesday evenings and on Saturday mornings. We have in the past broadcast with Derby. That is something that we have revisited with them. They've changed some technology, but are verifying that they are going to continue that practice with us. In the past, the other two stations were not equipped in that method, but we have reached out to them as well to find out if that is something that they could do for us as well.
I don't know how many folks actually watched the over-the-air broadcast, Channel Eight, KPTS, but I get comments from western Kansas, which is interesting to me. They watch the show sometimes out in western Kansas, which is great, but who's not getting the show is the folks in Derby and Hayesville. And that's, my district goes into those areas, and I guess I'm concerned the fact that a lot of folks may not be able to see the show live on Channel Eight during the daytime when they're at work, and these rebroadcasts happen, you say, I think there's a four times per week on the other channels?
Wednesdays and Saturdays, yes.
Okay. And so there's a few other times that people might have a chance to actually see the meeting. And there's a, I mean, I'm just thinking about the number of people who are missing because they're not able to see the show live. And so we might also say this is available on YouTube and on our website, that if anybody who has an internet connection can go and watch the meetings after the fact as well.
Absolutely.
Is it also broadcast live on our channel, on our website, do you know?
It is broadcast live on our website. People can get streaming video live through our sedgwickcounty.org. They can go online later and watch it on demand, either through YouTube or through our website. And actually, it is programmed on the website for the later demand, where you can click by the specific item. So you don't have to watch the entire commission meeting. If you're only interested in one item, you can click on that one specific item, and it takes you directly to that place.
Does Wichita City Council, are they broadcast on any over-the-air type of broadcast that people who don't have an internet connection or a cable channel could see it?
It's my understanding that they broadcast on their Channel Seven.
So they don't actually have a over-the-air type, in other words, a non-pay? You mentioned, you made a moment ago, you made a comment that if someone doesn't have a cable subscription, they would not be able to get the meetings if it's not on Channel Eight. But the city of Wichita doesn't actually have anything that's not a pay-for type service to see the meetings?
Right. They have their Channel Seven, so...
Have they had any, do we know if they've had any problems or complaints, and how long have they been doing that? Is any history there?
I don't have any idea what their setup has been.
Do you know whether or not we've ever paid to be on Channel Seven? Have we, is that a free service to us, or do we actually have to pay for that?
For our rebroadcasts?
For us to be on Channel Seven on any of the places in the county that we're on Channel Seven, are we paying for that service?
No. It has simply been an agreement arrangement with them as they are able to do that for us.
Okay. I'm reading the contract here, and it looks on item 12, this severability clause. It's very short. Is that all we have? If we decide to change our mind on this contract, is this, we can change our direction at any time? Is that what that says? I'm trying to read the details of that, so the county councilor can answer that question.
Commissioner Howell?
Yes.
I think what that says is that if some, if we had a dispute and some court decided that there was some clause or provision that was unenforceable, the rest of the contract was still invalid.
Okay. Is there anything in this contract that gives us the chance to walk away from this if we have a desire to do so sometime during the year?
Not during the year.
There is an item 13 for termination. Either party may terminate for any reason with 30 days' notice.
Okay. I will just state also, since we're talking about this, it is a desire of mine to see some evening meetings and some remote meetings, and I hope that we can do that down the road. There's some logistical problems with that right now, and I've asked our staff to look at ways to resolve those logistical barriers, and hopefully, we can maybe do that down the road. I think that's a good thing for us to get, you know, out into the district and let people see us in the evenings when they're off of work and actually talk to a commissioner and that type of thing. So this contract would not be able to help us in that case. It reads right now, this is really for Wednesdays at 9:00, and anything outside of that would not be supported by KPTS.
At this time, yes.
Okay. All right. Well, I understand the contract, and I'm willing to make a motion to accept the contract. I think there's some ideal things that are not really addressed at this time, but maybe things we can look on down the road. So I'd like to make a motion we would accept the contract.
Second. Commissioner Norton? I mean, Enruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to express our appreciation for KPTS and its partnership that's been longstanding and has proved beneficial, I think, to the both county commissions, for us to help get our message out, and to the citizens of Sedgwick County who turn, who tune in and keep track of our activities. I believe that KPTS has truly been a partner in trying to help us do this in a favorable way for both of us, so appreciate that.
Mr. Peterjohn?
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Commissioner Enruh, and I was interested in, I think we've got some folks from Channel Eight here with us. I don't know if they'd like to provide any comment for the record, because I am interested in the point that Commissioner Howell raised in terms of the possibility of remote or evening meetings, if we did that on an occasion in the future, and if that, if there are technical issues that need to be brought up and discussed, or if that's something that's with the latest technology that's out there, something that can be handled relatively, relatively easily.
Do you want to speak to?
We'll go.
Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Phil Richardson, KPTS. Thank you for having us today. I do major gifts at the station, and Dave McClintock over here, he's the Director of Operations. So he's the technical guy, and I'm just the more non-technical, but to answer your question about the evening meetings, we do not possess a remote truck like we did back in the old days, you know, when we used to have a remote truck to broadcast the signal from a remote location. So that's kind of the main hang-up, if you will, on that situation. The other hang-up is PBS does not allow us to disrupt their programming only on occasion. It's a very, very limited amount of time on our main channel, 8.1. So that's the main thing with PBS, is we can only interrupt that programming in a very, very limited amount of time throughout the year. So there is a possibility that we might be able to broadcast evening meetings on a supplement channel that we have. We have two other channels, 8.2, 8.3. So our Explorer channel, 8.2, it's feasible. We could investigate, you know, broadcasting evening meetings that way. But again, I would have Dave come up here and explain kind of the technicality issues that that might pose, but as far as having the channel space to do it, I believe on 8.2, it is possible. Now, whether we could get the signal from that remote location and whatever the terminology is, I'll have Dave come up and speak to that. But as far as the channel, having the channel space on 8.2, that's possible. We could investigate that.
So it might be more of a, like taped away is what you're saying? If you can't disrupt the evening program the way you can, apparently, it hasn't been a problem on Wednesday morning programming.
Right. It could be recorded at the remote location and then played back at a different time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question for the gentleman. By the way, I also want to show appreciation to KPTS. I know I've watched the broadcasts, and I do record them most weeks, and I go back and watch the meetings, and the production is very good, and I thank you for providing that service. It's been a good thing for our community. 8.2 and 8.3, those are over the air but not available on cable. Is that correct?
They are available on cable during, depending on the tier that you would have of cable. 670 and 671 would be those channels on Cox Cable.
What about, do you know about U-verse?
It's not on U-verse.
Available on U-verse, okay. So, you know, about half the people out there have Cox, and half the people have U-verse, I think. As far as the rebroadcast, would that be able to be closed captioned through the normal service that you have now? He says yes.
Yes.
Okay. That is a detail that's important to our county clerk, because they do verbatim minutes for these meetings, which I feel sorry for them, frankly, because I talk too long all the time, but it gives them a baseline for them to start with, and they know they download the closed captioning, and they correct them, and I appreciate what they do. So thanks to our county clerk for the great work that they do as well. But closed captioning is very important to them so that they can have a baseline for their minutes. I don't have any other questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kristi, I just want to clarify. You said, I thought you said section 13 allows for either party to term...
It's 213. Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
There's 213.
Oh, I see.
Little.
Okay.
It's kind of a typo.
It should really be 14, then. Okay, got it. That had me confused.
The next page.
We don't have a motion yet, do we?
Yes, we do.
We do? Oh, that's right, in a second. All right. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Enruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterjohn?
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Kristi, thank you for being here. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, A Resolution to amend the Wichita-Sedgwick County Unified Building and Trade Code by moving mechanical provisions located in the article for the building code into the article for the mechanical code. Also, this resolution amends the plumbing code to remove the requirement for tracer wires contained within section 604.9 of the Uniform Plumbing Code 2012 Edition.
Good morning, Chairman and Commission. Tom Stoles, Director of the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department. I'm here this morning to discuss three relatively minor code modifications concerning the Joint City of Wichita-Sedgwick County Unified Building and Trade Code. Two of the changes I will be discussing are relatively minor cleanup issues within the current code, while a third issue represents a small deregulation of a prior requirement regarding local plumbing code. The first cleanup issue pertains to referencing of mechanical code within the unified code document itself. The joint code, as it exists today, has five chapters. Chapter one, administration. Chapter two, building code. Chapter three, plumbing code. Chapter four, electrical code. And chapter five, mechanical code. There are currently references regarding mechanical code work in both chapters two and five within the code. This has been confusing for staff and for contractors, and staff has worked with Wichita-Sedgwick County Mechanical Advisory Board to migrate all mechanical code language from chapter two into chapter five, so it's contained in a single chapter. Makes it easier to read, one point of reference. The second cleanup issue deals with plumbing and mechanical contractor license renewals. Just to give you the history, prior to the city-county merger of code departments, the city of Wichita required annual renewal of licenses and certificates for plumbing and mechanical contractors, while Sedgwick County required relicensing every two years. At the request of customers, in an effort to build consistency of practice within the merger, the code was changed to reflect the two-year renewal strategy employed by the county. During the original change, however, there were some sections of the code that continued to reflect the one-year renewal language, and today's resolution will fix those mistakes. And finally, the third issue in today's resolution pertains to a portion of the Unified Plumbing Code in regard to what are known as tracer wire requirements. As a background, when laying underground utility material, which is comprised of plastic or PVC, it is often required to add what is referred to as a tracer wire next to or on top of the utility line. This tracer wire assists future renovation contractors in finding the existing line prior to performing repairs. Historically, the Uniform Plumbing Code has contained regulation which mandated the use of tracer wires between water meters and the connections to houses or commercial structures which is fed by the water line. Recently, the city of Wichita Water Utility has determined it does not want outside contractors or customers accessing their meter cans or putting this type of wiring into the easement surrounding their meter cans. Upon this revelation, the Wichita-Sedgwick County Plumbing Advisory Board voted to request deregulation of this portion of the code and no longer require tracer wires for this application. I think they had two main reasons for making that recommendation. Number one is the water lines are generally straight-line installations between the meter can and the home or business, and thus, a contractor can determine the line location without the tracer wire. And secondly, it prevents the consumer from having to pay the expense of putting in a tracer wire access box, which is what they'd have to do since they can't get into the water meter can any longer, and nor will they have to continue paying for the actual tracer wire installation. It should be noted that this is not a prohibition. If home or business owners still desire tracer wires for their city water line, they can put them in, as long as they do not encroach upon the city water meter can. The difference is this resolution today is that MABCD will no longer regulate this issue, nor will it check for it on its inspections. The staff request today is to accept and pass this resolution, and I would be glad to answer any questions.
Commissioners, what's the will of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I knew that we approved the resolution. Authorize the chair's...
Second. Comments or questions? Tom, you did a great job. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm Lonnie Wright, 1721 South Lulu in Wichita, and I want to express appreciation for the mechanical board and staff in trying to consolidate these different rules that the government code has spread out. They've made it more consolidated, like our private code. You know, for 100 years, our tradespeople have seen what works and doesn't work. We've had a separate code body that we've used. We've had a third party enforcing the code that somebody else used, and we had even another third party that would control or provided the exams. We didn't want government control or influence. Only thing we wanted from government, and I'm talking nationally, is uniform enforcement of the rules. But as the inspectors would inspect, they thought they knew better than the tradespeople. And so we, they came out with a national code. They sued to stop our national building code, and they went into the trades to do their codes. They didn't get an electric code, and we still have that going on, you know, in our plumbing and mechanical. The thing is, the inspectors learned if they divided their code books up, instead of just one book, into three or four, then they made more money. So this has made a complication. If we go with the international codes, which the mechanical code is under, you've got to have so many different code books. So this was work that they did to consolidate things, and it's a good answer for the mechanical people. So I just want to recognize the work they did to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Lonnie. See no one else who wants to comment? Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Enruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterjohn?
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item G, Amendment to the Capital Improvement Program for Main Tag Office.
Can you change that, Kristi? Good morning, Commissioners. Make this a little easier to see.
There you go. Just arrow down.
All right, thanks. I'm Steve Clausen, Facilities Fleet and Parks Director. I'm here this morning requesting your approval of a CIP amendment for a new main tag office for the Treasurer's Office. Just a bit of history for that project, or that facility. It was 1988 that the building was first moved into. It was a leased facility initially. A year later, it was purchased, and we've operated there for 27 years. The current overgrown building is 6,778 square feet, and all agree it's much too small, and there are far too few parking spaces. And over the last 10 years, the previous Treasurer and the current Treasurer, Linda Kozier, have advocated for a facility that better met the county's needs, and I think Linda's thrilled to be the Treasurer to have pushed this through. This year, you asked us to pursue a solution to this tag office need through an RFP, a Request for Proposal process, that needed, that defined our needs and asked the private sector to help with their creativity in providing a solution for us, and that process has worked, and it enables us to bring to you a CIP amendment today. And that process has worked, and it enables us to bring to you a CIP amendment today. It was June 16th that we did receive 15 proposals or responses, actually 15 responses, only three of which were actual proposals. We used our selection committee to evaluate and discern the merits of that, those proposals. It was made up of Linda Kozier and Randy Bargdill from the Treasurer's Office, myself, and Tanya Cole from Facilities, Rick Durham helped us from finance, and Kim Evans was involved in purchasing. And after a lengthy and detailed negotiation with Dome Properties, whose proposal provided the best and highest overall value to the county, we're pleased to be able to recommend to you today their project proposal. Subject to your approval of this CIP amendment, which you'll be asked later in the meeting through the Board of Bids and Contracts to approve that contract with Dome Properties. Now that we have that firm contract that includes all the required build-to-suit elements that meets our needs, we must provide for the funding authority necessary. The recommendation, the recommended action before you now is to approve an amendment to the 2015 CIP with a new project entitled "New Main Tag Office" in the amount of $2,318,000. That number is the sum of the negotiated contract with Dome Properties, the amount of $1,645,000 and $673,000 of owner's items. The owner's items are made up of architectural and engineering fees, furnitures, fixtures, and equipment, signage, networking, and moving expenses and a contingency allowance. The CIP amendment would use a cash transfer from the general fund to pay for the project. Some of the features of the project include fully, full renovation inside and out of a 20,540 square foot building. The facility will have all-new, efficient interior with new air conditioning, electrical, and plumbing systems, and have great access to loading docks and delivery doors. There will be 139 onsite parking stalls, providing adequate parking for the customers and employees. It is a single-tenant building located on the southwest corner of Meridian and Douglas, which has close proximity to Kellogg, which is, should provide most county residents with really good access to the facility. It is a fully customized renovation plan that meets the specific needs of the tag office, and we expect the construction to take about 120 days. Commissioners, we've talked with you a long time about this need over the years. I believe you're familiar with most of this because we've briefed you several times on the course that we followed with this process. Sedgwick County Treasurer Linda Kozier is with us, and Randy Bargdill's here as well. She's been closely involved in this process all the way through, dare I say, pushing. She and I will be happy to answer any of your questions, and we recommend approval of this amendment.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on this issue? Seeing none. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just curious, how long have we been trying to solve this Murdoch tag office problem? We don't call it a problem, it's been a long time, if I remember. I might throw a number of years out there, but I'd like to ask you the question, or Linda.
Probably goes back before my time.
Treasurer Kozier.
I didn't know he was that tall. Good morning, and I know Jan Kennedy was Treasurer when this initial project began. And then I worked for Ron Estes. So in 2006, we started the process again. Now Ron's the state Treasurer, and I've been working on it since I've been Treasurer. And I'm just very thankful that you're considering this amendment. It's been going on probably, I'm going to guess, since probably 2000. Tim, you've been here the longest.
We were talking about it my very first day as a county commissioner. It's been over 15 years ago.
Okay. I knew it'd been a long time.
I've heard someone say 17 years, maybe that's the right number. I don't know if that's right, but at least 15 years. And so I guess this is a huge milestone in my mind. Been trying to do this for a very long time, and it's been, been one of those things that's been hard to, hard to make a decision on. And so I think, one thing the RFP process has done, Request for Proposal process has done, is it's driven us towards, towards seeing everything that's on the table that we can, that we can possibly consider, and it drives us to the requirement to make a decision. And I think that's one thing that's changed this, changed this versus what maybe's happened over the last 15 to 17 years. I would say, I wanted to reflect on the 271 building for just a moment, because there was, there was a plan a year ago to put this tag office in the 271 building, but I personally had a lot of concerns about the parking, parking especially. One of the problems at the Murdoch office is, is lack of parking. How many parking spaces do you have over at the Murdoch office right now?
32.
32 spaces. And so, a lot of the customers and employees, where do they, where do they park if they don't have spaces?
Staff has to park on the street. They start at Water Street, run past KSN, and then down Ninth to Ninth Street, and they walk to the office from there.
I see. So it's really not, not really adequate parking over at Murdoch, and that's one of the problems, and so we're trying to solve that with an adequate office for our customers. Going to the 271 building, just adding up the number of people who are assigned to work in that building, plus the number of expected customers, at a peak, at a peak level, it was, it was obvious to me that there wasn't going to be adequate parking at the 271 building, which was a major concern. And I think the 271 building was made, the decision was made to purchase that a year ago, not because of, not because of the tag office. That was an afterthought, I believe. I think that the main purpose was to find space for MABCD and MAPD, which it obviously is going to do that now, but the, but the tag office was, was put into that, I think, as a way to fill up the extra space. And so, it wasn't really because of the tag office that the decision was made, that I, that I understand, is my opinion. And maybe I'm wrong about that, but this is a better, this is a better decision, because this is all ground floor, no elevators required, right? You have a basement if you need to, to use that for other storage or whatever in this building. And I understand this building's going to have bathrooms on the main floor. That's one of the, one of the changes that's going to be made during the renovations, I guess.
Break room on the main floor.
Break room on the main floor. So this has got some tremendous advantages, all main level, and it's going to be plenty of space and plenty of parking, and it's not very far from their current location, really. So this is a, this is a win-win-win. And the cost of this actually is going to be, in my opinion, less, because if you look at the renovation cost of 271 building, the original renovation budget was about $1 million a floor, and you were going to take about two floors of that, plus bond and interest, plus purchase price, you add all that up, and it's, and it's well in excess of what we're doing today. So this is, in my opinion, a win for the taxpayers as well. Better services, great location, and we're repurposing a building that needs, needs something to be, make that part of our neighborhood, one of our neighborhood abandoned buildings, basically, make it a good thing for our communities as well. So I'm happy about this decision. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, we would approve the, approve the amendment to the Capitol, 2015 Capital Improvement Program. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Commissioner Peter John.
Beat me to the second, but I do have some comments, because your predecessor, Treasurer Kozier, Ron Estes, that was one of the, this was one of the issues he brought up to me. And every time I spoke with the group, the people who were in the central part of the city, they'd talk about the main tag office and the challenges there, and I know there's some features that go beyond just going into a bigger building that has adequate parking, but I do plan to be supportive on this, and having a facility that's on basically the intersection of two major arterial streets in Wichita, I think is a real positive, and it'll help, help that area, and I think it's going to be a big, big plus once we get it fully up and operating, and I think it'll be a much better situation for the Treasurer's Office employees, too. But, but I think this is, this is long overdue, and I am delighted to be able to support this motion today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Enruh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations, Linda.
Thank you, Dave.
We're going to get this done finally, but I just wanted to highlight the point that you've worked with the Kansas Highway Patrol.
I have.
To help, you want to tell us about that?
The Kansas Highway Patrol initially was going to do all their VIN inspections at their new location at 254 N Rock. I'm very pleased to say that they are going to move with the main tag office to 2525 West Douglas upon approval, of course, of the, the contract from you. And I would appreciate you welcoming them for the continued good working relationship that we have. If we don't allow them to go to the main tag office, everyone will have to drive to 254 N Rock, which is quite a ways, especially if you're in Cheney, Clearwater, Mount Hope, Hayesville. It's a very long drive, and I just think that it's beneficial for not only us, but for them to be able to provide a better service for the customers.
Primarily, it's beneficial to our, to our users, to our customers. Appreciate your working that out with the Highway Patrol and make that.
Thank you, Dave.
A good, a good cooperation between all.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair.
Linda, I want to say congratulations, and.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you for your patience. I know we've been trying to get this done for a while, and for a variety of reasons in the past, this project has been prevented from moving forward. Something that has been needed for, you say, at least 15 years, and for a variety of reasons has been stopped. We started this in May, so now here we are, four and a half months down the road, we're getting it done. And I think this is a tremendous service for our community.
Thank you.
I thank staff, Steve, and everything you did. I know this process was a little new, and so there was a learning curve, but I think it's helpful for us in the future to use this process, and this is an example of just seeing the needs and focusing on our core functions and getting things done. And I'm sure you'll, you'll enjoy it, and by the way, we're going to make cash for it, right?
Oh, I don't know.
Yes, we are.
Okay. Oh, okay.
I know you've been wanting to for years, set aside the excess that you have left over. We haven't been able to get that done, but in the end, it adds up to the same.
Okay.
We'll pay cash, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Enruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransah.
Aye.
Thank you, Linda, thank you, Steve. Next item, please.
Item H, reported at the Board of Bids and Contracts regular meeting on November 19th, 2015.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on November 19th results in two items for your consideration. Item number one relates to the CIP amendment presented by Mr. Steve Clausen that you just approved, and this is for the building, for the main tag office for Facilities Department. The recommendation is to accept the negotiated proposal from Dome Properties LLC in the amount of $1,645,000. And the final item, item number two, is the bridge improvements for Public Works. Recommendation is to accept the low bid from Wildcat Construction Company Incorporated and subsidiaries in the amount of $994,471.04. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of both items.
Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we adopt the Board of Bids and Contracts recommendations.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Enruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransah.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Chairman, Mike Scholes, County Manager, recommend approval of consent agenda items I through Q.
Commissioners, what's the will of the board? Commissioner Howell.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the, the adoption of the consent agenda, but I would like to remove item K for some discussion. So items I through Q, except for item K.
Item K.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Before I say that, I'm going to offer the opportunity for anyone from the public to speak on this issue. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Enruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransah.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to talk specifically about one item that's in this, in this revision of Sedgwick County personnel policies, and that has to do with the travel and business meeting expense policy, resolution amending the Sedgwick County policies with respect to the car allowances. I wanted to just, I guess, number one, tell the public that this is, it was an accusation in the, in the Wichita Eagle this morning that we're trying to not be transparent. I don't think that's true. I want to just address that. First of all, there was an article that came out earlier, it came out, I believe, on November the 30th, written by Daniel Salazar, and we discussed this on the phone. In fact, I sent him a copy of the manager's recommended policy at that time. So he had full access to that, and he wrote a very good story, frankly. It's a great story. Good job, Daniel. I noticed there's no public comments on it. I checked this morning right before the meeting, there's still zero comments from the public regarding this issue. And it's a very, very well-written story, talks about the details of why this is important. I would ask our manager, if you don't mind, Manager Scholes, do you know who's written, who has, who has determined our car allowance policy in the past? I know you weren't here, but do, do you know who, maybe would it set the, set the policy in the past?
I don't think there was a policy in the past, Ron.
We might ask Ron to come to the podium and address that issue.
I don't think there was a policy in the past.
Thank you.
I think this actually provides a policy.
Okay.
Ron Hold, Assistant County Manager, on, no, there was no written policy or guidelines, and this item came up like in June of 2014, on the agenda, was fully discussed, and at that time, the commission tabled action and asked the manager's office to develop a policy or guidelines. And of course, with all that was going on, the budget, we were in the middle of the 2015 budget at that time, right after that, Bill announced his retirement. So there were a lot of things happening. This then came up on the to-do list when I was working as Acting County Manager. I worked with the County Counselors' Office, worked with the Finance Office, and we put together the change in the policy and then the corresponding guidelines to help lead this through the budgeting process under, of course, the budgeting process, always under the direction of the manager with the final approval being the commission's.
So if I can summarize this, then the policy wasn't written in black and white so much, but it was still managed by the manager?
That's, that's correct, for the most, for the most part, and of course, there was no, there were no guidelines for, for doing that.
The biggest difference in this policy that I can see is, is it outlines some folks, some folks specifically would be eligible for the allowance, where in the past, at least a few of them had been excluded from receiving a car allowance. It wasn't, wasn't optional to them at that time.
That's correct.
And there's three officials I'm thinking of. Now, just to be clear, the county manager gets a car allowance, and I, I think that's very reasonable, because you've got to manage the county, you've got to go all over the place, and there's lots of places to go and, and visit, different buildings throughout the county and all kinds of events, and I think it's very reasonable that the manager would have a car allowance. The district attorney has an allowance, I believe, and that's, that's been that way for a long time, is that correct?
My understanding is correct, yes.
There's no change to that.
Right.
And I, I think that seems reasonable. Again, he's an elected official, and he goes all over the, all over the county doing his work, and it also relieves an administrative burden for him. Think about this, you know, he could pull out a logbook and write down exactly where he's going and all of that, but that becomes an administrative burden for him, and he's a very busy man. And I guess, I, I would respect him as an elected official enough to simply say, you know, if he's running around the county doing 165 miles a week, then he would be eligible for the full allowance, in my, my opinion. That's, that's the equivalent of what this is worth, 165 miles a week, doing county business. And also, I noticed that there's, one of the people that's actually named in this current policy that I think is interesting is the election commissioner, because they're under the state statute, it actually says specifically that they are allowed a car allowance, and for whatever reason, haven't been able to get that in the past. So I find that very curious as to how the county ended up in a, in a position not to give a car allowance when the statute dictated that we had to do so. And again, I've talked to the election commissioner, and, and she goes all over the state, talking with other election, election folks, and plus she has to manage setting up poll sites and coordinating places for the elections to happen. And let me talk about our county register of deeds for just a minute. In 2014, I was a legislator in Topeka. I saw our register of deeds, Bill Meek in Topeka, I believe, every day of the entire session. Now, maybe towards the end of the session, he wasn't there, because maybe there was no, no reason for him to be there at that time. But during the 2014 session, he was there, I'm going to say, at least 50 days out of the session. And out of those 50 days, I asked, I asked our register of deeds, no, did you have a car policy? And the answer was no, and he could have, he could have turned in mileage, but he chose not to do so. And so he, he accepted the cost of that, and he's doing county business, advocating for the county, making about 50 trips to Topeka. I think it would be very reasonable, in my opinion, for him to get a car allowance. And by the way, there is one takeaway in this policy as it's written currently, and that is, under the current policy, even with a car allowance, someone who travels more than 100 miles would be, would be able to expense any mileage over 100 miles on a single trip. And that is now being taken away with this change. And so that has been a, a twist in this thing that has been used by some commissioners in the past that will no longer be available. Is that correct, Manager Hold?
I'm trying to recall, when you brought that up, I remember we had long discussions about it, and it seems to me we left that in there, but it would be at the option of the, of course, the person using the mileage, whether or not they would use that.
Well, there's, there's a, there is, on the last block of the, of the changes in policy there, it shows that, that, that clause has been struck through. So my interpretation of that is, is there's no longer an option for someone for someone with a car allowance to spend or to make a claim for mileage over 100 miles on a trip. So, which to me is fine, but it is a takeaway. So some commissioners have used that in the past. I might also say that there is no requirement for someone to take a car allowance. This is simply optional.
That's correct.
Some of the folks I've talked to don't take the car allowance or don't intend to take the car allowance. And maybe they'll take part of it because they can justify some of the mileage, and they would like to make it easy on themselves, again, removing some administrative burden and do what seems reasonable to them. Again, I made a comment in the article that Daniel Salazar wrote in the Wichita Eagle that these are elected folks, we're not talking about a huge amount of money. These folks, if you ask them, I think they can justify the reasons why they needed or would use a car allowance. I would like to just, I guess, give them some trust. I believe it's reasonable to have the manager manage this policy, and it seems reasonable that the elected officials would be treated equally and fairly. Might also say that the county sheriff has been given a vehicle in lieu of a car allowance. Is that correct, Manager?
That's correct.
So he actually has a whole, has a car that he uses, I think, every day, which is very reasonable. Again, I would never question his need for a vehicle. He does a tremendous amount of work for the county, and he's going all over the county doing his job. And I think it's very reasonable that he has a vehicle to do that. And so I think the policy is simply codifying what's already been going on. And I think we're removing a twist in this policy that has been rarely used but is not really necessary, and that's the 100-mile clause. And then finally, I think treating the electeds equivalent and trusting them to determine how much of this allowance they would use. I think this is reasonable. I'd like to make a motion that we would adopt item K. And I would also not refer to this as a perk. I think that's a slam. It's not accurate. I think this is, it's not the word I would use. I think that the reason the policy exists is because there is legitimate county businesses being used in these counties to receive this allowance. And I think my Commissioner Peter John specifically, his district is enormous. About 50% of Cedric County is in his district. And he's got, I think, nine cities he communicates with and visits regularly. So I have no doubt he puts on 165 miles a week doing county business. So I think I've said plenty. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion we would adopt item K as well.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I jump in, just to clarify, although my district's big, not quite 50% of the square miles of Cedric County are in my district since, it was pretty darn close to that, but after the 2010 census, my district shrank a little bit, and portions of my district went to, my district at that time went to Commissioner Norton and Commissioner Ransaw. So I'm a little bit less than half, but I would say I do have a dozen of the 27 townships in the county are in my district. And you're correct on the number of cities. And having all that ground to cover, it's certainly important. But for the officials we're talking about here, they're countywide officials. They have the whole county. And I know that all of, and all elected officials, in fact, all county employees, I'm going to go from memory here, which occasionally gets me into trouble, but we've had the county checkbook online, and the records for how our expense accounts and all that information for every county employee, elected or non-elected, is ultimately available for the public or anyone else with an interest in trying to see what, how money gets spent, whether it's for expenses or salaries or how county spending in general goes. So I think there's a significant amount of transparency, and I think there's accountability. And I think for the elected officials, we all have to speak to our constituents while we're in office. And of course, obviously, most, we get the most intense communications, obviously, when elections roll around. So I do plan to be supportive on this. I appreciate Commissioner Howell's opportunity to pull this off the consent agenda so that we could have a discussion on it. Because I know every elected official in this county, from having talked with them, they've got a variety of requirements to get around the county. And some folks have had the opportunity to, whether they have a vehicle or they have a ability for reimbursement or not, and some haven't. And I think this is, levels the playing field, and there will be full public accountability here. But I don't think, I think the effort was, was to provide a fair situation for all elected officials going forward. So I do plan to be supportive, and I appreciate the clarification in terms of what's being cut back as part of this policy too. But that's a detail that I haven't seen covered yet. So maybe it will after today's meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. I will note that this particular item has 15 personnel policies listed in it, and it's routine that we put revisions to personnel policies in the consent agenda. We've done that every year since I've been here. So that being said, we do have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw.
Aye. Next item, please. Well, I guess we're to public agenda, which we don't have anyone signed up for, and legislative issues. I don't believe we have anything.
Fire District.
So then we'll.
Fire District today.
Oh, yes, we do have a fire district. So that, before we moved it up, to other, we'll recess the meeting of the Board of Cedric County Commissioners and call to order the Board of Cedric County Commissioners, functioning as a governing body of Fire District One for December 2nd, 2015. Madam Clerk, first item.
Roll call. Commissioner Unruh.
Present.
Commissioner Norton.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Peter John.
Present.
Chairman Ransaw.
Present. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular Fire District Number One meeting, minutes of October 14th, 2015. All Commissioners were present.
Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the minutes of the October 14th Fire District meeting.
Second.
Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw.
Aye. Next item?
Consent agenda.
Chairman, Mike Scholes, County Manager, recommend you approve items B through C.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Commissioner Peter John?
Just a quick comment. This will also include, item C is the same personnel policy issue that we just had discussions on. But obviously, for the Fire District, there aren't, but it's basically, these are all personnel, all the personnel policies that were similar to the ones we had in the regular meeting. And I plan to be supportive of this motion.
Call the vote, please.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw.
Aye. Miss Manager, is there anything else to come before the Fire District?
No, Mr. Chairman, that's it.
Saying nothing else, we'll adjourn the meeting of the governing body of Fire District One and call back to order the regular meeting of Board of Cedric County Commissioners. And we're now at the other portion of our meeting. Commissioners, do you have anything for Commissioner Peter John?
Well, yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. December 2nd's an important day in American history, and I'd be remiss if I didn't point out the fact that on December 2nd, 1823, James Monroe began the process outlining what became the Monroe Doctrine, which was important in the 19th and early 20th century, opposing European interference in the Western Hemisphere. In 1763, a few decades earlier, it's interesting, Newport, Rhode Island, the first synagogue, Jewish synagogue, was established in America. 1942, at the University of Chicago, Enrico Fermi and others gave the first demonstration of a controlled nuclear chain reaction. And in 1980, Congress created the 6 million acre Denali National Park and Preserve, where what used to be called Mount McKinley, and I think has been changed recently to Denali, is located in central Alaska. It's very impressive, if you ever get a chance to see it. So I just wanted to point out that December 2nd was an important day in American history and put that on the record. Thank you. Oh, and one other item, give a positive shout out. Folks should, and I don't know if we can get this quite close enough, the enclosed with property tax bills that go out is a detailed breakdown on, while the county is involved through the county treasurer in collecting all the property taxes in the county, most of it gets spent by other local governmental bodies. And there's a detailed breakdown here. And if you go online, you'll be able to put in your address on the county website and see how it's broken down for your specific area, regardless of which city, or if you're not in an incorporated area township you're located in, as well as obviously schools and the countywide and any other special taxing districts that are out there. I think this is important for citizens to take a look at, especially those who have escrow and end up paying through their mortgage their property taxes. So I think this is an important new feature, and want to commend all the folks here at Cedric County that worked to get this included with the property tax bills that went out recently. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. I've got a few things I want to talk about today. A couple of weeks ago, Mr. Peter John provided some information to the public and a warning to the public. And he prefaced that by saying what he was going to say was not politically correct. And I'm going to give the same warning that what I'm about to say on a couple of issues may not be politically correct for some of the progressives in our community. So you may want to turn the TV off or the volume down, because what I'm going to talk about today will include the truth and some facts. And that may be particularly offensive to some members of the Wichita Eagle editorial board and others. First, I want to talk now about the, just say a few comments about the recall effort that happened recently, and the DA has issued a judgment on. I want to say that the response I received from the public was unbelievably and overwhelmingly positive. And I want you to, I want them to know that I appreciate that, that I've got their backs, and I know they have mine. I understand that there are many hardworking, tax-paying citizens out there that don't believe illegal aliens should get welfare benefits. And I understand that. I'll continue to fight for you. I also know that you're not racist bigots because of that position, as some would pontificate and say. So unfortunately, there are people on the left who do things based on emotion and with a lack of the facts and information. And there's been, and that brings me really to my main point here. You know, a lot of the things that were talked about in the recall effort had to do with public health and some of the decisions that we've made here in the commission this last year, some of the things that I've supported as well. And even the Eagle opined that some of the decisions that we made were boneheaded. Unfortunately, this whole initiative and many of the things that are being said in the media are factually incorrect. Despite our efforts here at the county to get the information out on numerous times, there continues to be false and misleading information. So I'm going to try one more time to address some of these issues. I know for some, it's just not going to matter. For those on the left that are just completely committed to their ideology of big government and creating the nanny state and spending other people's money, the facts aren't going to matter. But I think it's important for myself and the commission as a whole to try and get the truth out there and the facts out there for the general public who may find themselves being misled by what they're hearing in the media. First of all, one of the central allegations with respect to the recall is that we had cut WIC benefits. And we've said this numerous times, there are absolutely zero cuts to any WIC benefits. None of our actions will have any effect on who gets WIC benefits, nor how much. In fact, we didn't really cut anything out of WIC. We simply made a decision to spend less on administrative costs than what we were authorized to spend. It was purely about administrative costs. Our assigned caseload has gone down 38% since, I believe, 2010. So we said we are going to control our administrative costs. We still increased the amount we're going to spend on administrative costs from 1.8 million to 1.9. So it wasn't a cut at all. It was actually just a modest increase of $100,000, and we decided not to spend more than what we were authorized. We decided not to spend more than what was necessary. Basic common sense approach. How many times I'm going to say this, I'm sure it won't get through to some people because they won't care, but the facts need to get out there. Okay? We increased the amount of spending on our administrative costs by $100,000. But it will have no effect on WIC benefits whatsoever. Now, I sent an email to the editorial board asking them for specifics, things and reasons why they thought specific actions that we took were so-called boneheaded, or things they didn't like. And they just sent me back links to their opinion page. And I have continued to ask them, give me specific actions and reasons why they think they were bad decisions. They've yet to provide those specifics, because I think the facts would reveal that their opinions aren't based on facts. I mean, you can, everyone's entitled to opinion, but I think at some point, we need to grow up and move from, move from opinion to knowledge, and from knowledge to truth. Okay? But you've got to make an effort to find out what the facts are and be honest about it. Some people don't want to do that. And so along that same line, I'm going to talk about a couple of things that have come up here recently. There's been a recent article about STD rates climbing in Kansas. There was an article about this, and then there was an editorial about local rise in STD rates here locally. This goes along the same line as false, misleading, and deceptive information that's being put out by various members of the media, particularly in opinion pages. And everyone's entitled to their opinion. But I think there's a clear attempt here to create a narrative that is false and intentionally deceive the public. So let's talk about this. First of all, the original article was talked about the sexually transmitted disease rates have been climbing in Kansas, in the nation, for the last four years. All right, fair enough. Came out a report from the CDC. Okay, so write an article about that. That's good. But it's important to remember, this has been going on for four years. I think the data was up to 2014, but it's nationwide trend. So the article talked about that at the beginning, and at the end, it talked about some of the things that sexually, that some of our people here at Cedric County Health Department do. It actually talked about symptoms and treatment. For example, it said that, and the causes, it says nationally, gay and bisexual men are more at risk, for example, syphilis, because that's one of the things that's gone up nationally, so has HIV. And it says that disease investigators have seen an uptick in people who have anonymous sex, which complicates investigators' ability to track the disease. He said that people have been finding sex partners online through applications, and they meet a person and have sex without even knowing each other's name, and obviously having unprotected sex. And so now they think that may be causing an uptick in some of these diseases. That's fine. That makes sense. All right, very good. But in the middle of this, then, it goes off on this tangent about public health funding. And supposedly, some, quote, "health experts" think that it could be from a road of public health funding. And then it goes on to talk about how the Kansas Health Institute, which we know is not a credible organization, but nevertheless, they give the example of the Community Health Improvement Plan, which was cut out of Cedric County for next year. And it's a compilation of data, and how bad, you know, this is bad. And even though the expert said he hasn't studied specific effects of public funding cuts on STD rates, it could still be a problem. So we went off on this tangent, but the Eagle didn't fail to include that none of the cuts that we made next year had anything to do with communicable diseases. We have some people that do that. We didn't make any cuts in that area, and that was intentional. But they want to say, think about this. They're trying to give the impression, and I'll get to the editorial as well. Well, actually, let me just go on to this, because the editorial talks about this same, talks about this article. the editorial talks about this same, talks about this article, and they did include that the health officials appoint anonymous sexual encounters as a trend that makes it difficult and increases, leads an increase of syphilis and HIV, which is happening here locally. But then it goes on that according to some health experts, at least part of the blame goes to erosion of investment in public health, which is an issue here at Sedgewood County. For example, the $540,000 of cuts that we made in next year's budget. And it talks about the community health assessment, immunizations, cancer screenings, and infant mortality programs, none of which, first of all, have anything to do with sexually transmitted diseases. But second, I'll think about this. We're talking about national trends over the last four years up to 2014, and you're trying to connect it to reductions in spending that haven't even occurred yet. They don't go into effect until January. So you're trying to give the impression that somehow that's connected. That is absolutely absurd. But I can already see the narrative that's going to be happening over this next year. That's going to be, you know, it's easy for the editorial board to sit up on their ivory tower and pontificate about all these decisions that they're made, but if you don't make an effort to get facts and information, you're going to, you're going to write silly things like this that makes you look completely incompetent. This is not good for our community at all. It's absurd. Now, if all you're interested is your leftist ideology, then I guess it serves its purpose. But think about it. You're trying to give the impression that spending cuts that haven't gone into effect could be linked to STD increases that's happened in the past. Public health funding does not cause syphilis or HIV. Actions by individuals cause you to get syphilis or HIV. If you have sex with an anonymous person unprotected, you're going to get syphilis or HIV. If you're going to participate in certain sexual acts, you're going to be at increased risk, period. That's what causes it. Not proposed funding cuts in programs that aren't related to it and that are going to happen in the future. You know, if you really want to talk about cause and effect, why don't you look at some of the efforts that are going on throughout this country to promote all sorts of sexual behavior as being normal, acceptable, and moral? When you encourage and promote via the media and television, whatever, immoral behavior, you're going to get more of that behavior, and you're going to get more unintended consequences. You're going to get some of those negative effects. So if you want to avoid some of these things, then you don't participate in that behavior. Instead of trying to put the blame on cuts that haven't even taken effect, trying to put the blame on the taxpayer, basically, let's address the real problem. Are you really interested in addressing the problem and individual behaviors, or you just want to cover that up? If you want to have a serious dialogue, then let's have a serious dialogue. But that means you're going to have to put your leftist ideology aside and be willing to accept the facts, the figures, and the truth. Okay? With that, I think I've said enough, and I think it's important for the public to understand, and I hear this from a lot of people, so I know you understand it, that going forward, there's going to be continued series of attacks upon this commission for all the good decisions that we make. And you're not going to be told the truth on everything, and we're working with the manager and Communications Department, see what we can do to get the truth out and the facts out better. But we can't write the articles. We can't, we don't control the media. Some do a good job, some clearly don't. Some have an agenda more than others. But it's important. We have a job to work on behalf of the citizens of this county, and we are, and we will continue to do so, but we also have to do a better job of getting the facts out there so you know the truth of what's going on, regardless of the forces that work against us and attempt to lie and deceive the public. This is very important. So I'm committed to that fight for as long as I'm in here. No one's going to intimidate me and make me back down, because this is important work, and we'll continue to get it done. Anything else from commissioners? Mr. Manager, is there anything else to come before the commission?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.